Okay, we'll call community the holder of order 6:22 PM. Before we begin, I just wanted to congratulate the community in general and the Huskies in particular. It was quite a celebration here on Saturday afternoon, a rather amazing event. People had worked on that for days. They received due notice and congratulations, and it really was a great day. And I don't think any of this could have happened without the help of everyone in our recreation department. And so I thank you all for that. It was a huge, huge, huge event, so well done. All right, we'll move into public utilities and maintenance. Public utility board rate increase.
I was hoping Sam would be here, but we haven't seen him yet. Engineering Department had applied to the Public Utilities Board for the rise of water and wastewater rates as set out in bylaw 4550. First reading was done June 13th in 2016. We just received notice from the Public Utilities Board that they have approved it. Last time rates were adjusted was in 2012. Town of the Pottery has been a deficit for four of the last five years. Engineering Department recommends a council gives bylaw second, third reading and approve it.
Just for example, folks, you are currently paying $11.65 per 1,000 gallons for the first 20,000 gallons, and that will increase to $11.74. So that would be a nine cent increase. So it could have been much worse. If the Public Utilities Review Board did not like our increases, they would just assign us an increase.
Means it's to take effect until people first 2018?
Right.
The inclusion?
Yeah, 2.1 turn up here, public safety.
Acting Fire Chief is requesting to order turnout gear. He will need to go with the council as this is a capital expense. He's requiring five sets of gear were ordered last April at a cost of $96,000. We now have an additional nine members and we have outrate and run out of acceptable gear members safe. Gear is approximately $1,800 per firefighter, awaiting 2018 price to confirm. The turnout gear is a capital expense, therefore council approval is required. And the 2018 budget is not going to prove yet, which is also why a resolution is required. There is, he's recommending to order safety gear, sorry, safety current gear for seven members is questionable. Inventory is completed and new members coming on. There's diarrhea for new turnout gear and there is $235,859 in the reserve.
And we knew this was coming.
So how many?
Any discussions?
Five. Okay.
Well, he said five sets. I would order, yeah.
That's actually confused on that.
For seven members is questionable. I'll have to confirm.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's.
It's five.
It's five? Okay.
Okay, all right.
But if there's questionable, if safety of current year for seven members is questionable, why are we only ordering five?
Just the ones he's already had. The seven's a typo.
I'm sorry?
I think the seven's a typo. He was going to be five a year.
Yeah, please confirm that though. Seven people need, we should get it for seven people.
I don't know whether it needs to come back here. Can we just, is anybody going to dispute seven or five? So we can just come to council for resolution?
Right. Okay, 3.1 sale of residential lots.
Town of the Pottery sold residential lots at a price of $1,000 per lot and is required to sign the purchase agreement as the vendor. Council has developed a plan that would target the development of these lots in order to increase the tax base. Sale of residential lots at a price of $1,000 per lot was held on March 1st and 31 residential lots were sold. Recommendations that council passed a resolution authorizing the mayor and assistant CIA will to sign the purchase agreements for these lots on behalf of the Town of the Pot.
Any discussions?
And it was all done within a half minute.
We continue to get calls.
We continue to get calls, so it's moving forward. All right, 4.1 2016 outage.
2016 outage is ready for council and approved when signed, one resolution is required and going to be discussed. And so far, we are trapped in 2017.
So far. You want the cold notes? You want the big picture or the small picture stuff? Overall, there was a surplus. I think it's as comparable to what we had the year before. I don't think anything is really too far out of key. I know this doesn't take into account some of the problems we're having with the budget this year. I think those problems still existed, but I don't see anything here in the year that was shocking, I guess. You know, everything seems to be in line with what you'd expect the budget. We did go a little over what was budgeted, but nothing drastic. Some of the other kind of big picture items, the cash balance looks really large, but the reserves were the majority of it. I didn't really tack those out. There was about $630,000 left, which isn't a lot of operating money. And sometimes that goes year to year, a little bit higher, a little bit lower, but that's where we were at the end of the year. That's about it. I have some other thoughts, but maybe we just talked about them during the budget. I was kind of making notes in regards to these statements within the context of next year's budget. Did you have any questions in terms of, I know you've had these statements for a few days to take a look at? Do you have any questions based on what you saw? Any concerns? Anything you want me to address directly?
So there was no apparent unexpected changes or errors or differences that surprised us?
Nothing drastic, right? Nothing where you look at individual numbers and you're thinking, oh wow, this is way out. On the whole, there was a little more spending than anticipated in the budget. Those areas are probably going to be no surprise to anybody. You know, the wellness care, she went a little bit of a budget, stuff like that. In general, nothing blooms as a huge red flag problem. I think that small deficits and surpluses are expected. You're never going to hit zero, right? So we're within, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's not, it's not a huge jump either way. Overall, the year looks really good and it's a bit of an illusion, but it looks like we have a real big surplus. But then, you know, you factor in on our side, the PSAB statements, there's some changes there, like the interest gets backed out on our side because we don't get to claim that when we look at the cash type statements that we use. There's the library grant, which they factor out. We have to pull back in to kind of make our number look a little bit, makes our number look a little worse, but it's, again, it's not something that's a real big red flag to me. Again, we're talking about 16 statements, so they're not all that current still. When you're looking again a year back, and we had this conversation when we just did 15 a couple of months ago, when you're looking too far back, it becomes, it's just old history, right? So you can't change something like this.
Are we on pace for tightening this up even more yet? I mean, so it's 2018 now.
Ideally, you know, this is, this is the one that's outstanding. Seventeen's not due till June. So I'm hoping with a little bit of luck, a little bit of chance on my side here, we can be on time or real close to that deadline for seventeen and be looking at current statements at the right time. And then hopefully from that, we can start looking at quarterly or monthly statements and making better decisions.
That would be great.
That would be awesome.
That's my dream here.
Keep working for the dream.
Yeah, go for the dream.
You mentioned the reserves and it's all, I know we've talked about this before, it's all under one bank account?
It's all under one bank account. I did go out and open a new bank account with the intent to shuffle it over there so that we can keep that clear line. I haven't decided when to do it. I'd like to do it when we do our tax draw so that I know right then, you know, where the break is and we don't just end up rowing back against it to cover our missing funds. There is going to be a division in the near future, which I think is good. It should be a lot simpler to keep track of.
Any other comments? Questions at all? Thank you. 4.2 payroll and accounts.
Resolution to approve accounts is required as follows. Paper number five, amount of $89,729.3. Checks number, or checks in the amount of $258,803.27. EFTs in the amount of $97,478.3. There's a number of checks pointing out, sorry. Suzie Water Technology Solutions was for poly bags and water treatment chemicals in the amount of $18,000. Mid Continental, $16,700 was the bill of the pump, morgue fuels, $35,000 airport fuel. STICO, $64,000, or it was a bill for $64,296. Counselor give request to print out of 2017 STICO bills to date and the year will be forthcoming. I do have it here, but I have it in court predated. I hope all councilmen wanted to see it or...
So my question was, and I've said numerous times.
Amazing.
Yeah, you know, we should be looking at changing out electric waters. I know we had this conversation today. If you look at low hanging fruit, and we're in year three and a half, I don't know what else to say.
Very low hanging fruit.
There you go, right? I know in my experience, we saw a 25 to 30% decrease going electric. Today it was announced the carbon tax goes in September 1st and that's 3.87 cents a liter. So if you work those back, you'll see that's bad now and it's about to get way worse, right? So we talk about budgets and how we spend our money and we can joke about buying Zambonis. Well, we need to start investing in stuff that has some sort of payback, in my opinion. Or we can pay a hundred grand next year a month if you got problems now.
For 2017, we paid approximately $443,000 for cocaine and that was for the water treatment plant, civic center, Kelsey Rec, the wellness center, airport and airport terminal building. So it is a number of buildings that we do supply the cocaine.
It's also a number of dollars.
Well, I do remember that our municipal superintendent did do a little bit of looking around or asking around when we asked him to, and he did say that he felt that the buyback wasn't soon enough to change out the waters and to switch everything over.
He looked at geothermal, right? And in particular, I think this building, but I mean, it's up to us, right? Somebody's got to figure out, like it's your biggest expense and we keep going along like it's okay. And we all know the thermostat's still working here, so.
So resolution required to those accounts.
Okay, resolution. All right, special service levy. So my read on this is that the information that was put into the paper with no other release of any kind before that created more questions than it did answers. It frightened a lot of people. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people of the opinion that this special levy is to, we're going to leave the policing costs in the general budget and now we're going to charge them again in a special levy. And so like we're charging them twice. And that's, that's just not, that's not the case. There's a lot of misinformation out there, a tremendous amount. And I want to do what we can as a council tonight to get cleaner information to the general public through the camera. The status quo will kill our community. Just flat out kill our community. We have, in successive councils now, four, perhaps four and a half, maybe five, have said, well, look, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to worry about raising any taxes here. We'll work within what we have. And then we go about voting for pay increases here and pay increases there and pay increases here. And so we're, we're have less money each year than we had the year before and need to somehow carry on. The truth of the matter is, is that the Tony Zandos of the world, the Helga Brants of the world, the Doug Lovestads of the world, all three very major employers in our community have told us our number one issue is housing. We're not attracting the type of people that may need to work in their properties, in their, in their operations because they can't find adequate housing in our community. And so the first place, we've been talking around this table about levies for three years. And so at one point it looked good and at one point it didn't look good. And so we brought it back to the table again this year. We thought, well, what we'll do is we'll pull up policing services. This is a cost we cannot control. We get a bill and we need to pay it. There's been people out there saying that maybe you should be doing different policing then. Maybe, maybe you should be concentrating on this or that or the other thing. The bottom line is they're the police department and they know best how to police our community. We can give them certainly suggestions, but at the end of the day, there are the ones that are out there four in the morning protecting all of us. So it's a, it's a fixed cost. And so there's fair and then there's equal. And what I've learned in the last two releases is that is not necessarily the same thing. And our, our job was to take that policing figure, that $2.5 million, $2.3 million, whatever is in that, in that neighborhood, divided by the number of rolls and that's what people would pay. Everybody would pay the same. And so some people are of the opinion in our community that that's not fair. It's not fair and it's not equal. And I, I am of the opinion that if Counselor Cross calls 911, they're going to come to her $70,000 house. If Alan Gibb calls 911, they're going to come to his $250,000 house. They're going to do the same, they're going to do exactly the same thing. And it doesn't seem right that Alan Gibb should pay more for 911 services than Counselor Cross. That's the, that's the, that's the premise. So the reason why I asked us to be on the agenda tonight is to give the opportunity for all of us to try to, try to make people understand more about where we're going. It would appear quite obviously by talking to, or more to the point, listening to a lot of people over the last week or so, is that there, there is some tweaking to be done here. This has not gone forward for first reading and so I think we have, perhaps we have a remarkable opportunity here to try to get this right. You'll never please all of the people, but to get this as right as we possibly can so that we have our public hearing on the 28th, that there's a lot more knowledge out there. There's a lot more understanding. There's always going to be some people who, who think that others should pay more for the same service as, as they do. They'll never be able to change their minds. But I'm wondering if we can take this opportunity to, to be able to talk to our community about where we stand on, what we think about this, what direction, what direction should we be going in this? And again, I want to be, I want to be on the record that I'm not, I'm not at all happy about this, looking at this might be part of 2019. I want to see if we can get this done in 2018. I want to see if we can get this tweaked so that it can be, it can be done in 2018. And so keeping in mind that fair distribution of policing costs is what's at the table. And so I open the forum. Anybody wish to speak to that? Counselor Rock?
I agree with the, with the intent and the approach. I think many communities around the province are, are using this approach. We have to fairly spread the cost, the cost of these kinds of services across our tax base. I think we were all a bit surprised at how it landed and where it was, so we need to review that. I think we need to develop a clear model or approach as to how you apply it to your, your assessment at home and your taxes so you can clearly understand the difference and then at our public meeting communicate that both verbally and graphically to them because there, there's many things that happen when, when you use this kind of approach and people need to understand it. So as council, if we can clearly indicate that and present it to our citizens so that, so that then moving forward, we can potentially find that solution that won. Because I would like to see something happen in this 2018. But I don't want it to, to be where it is now where, where the public image is that it's a shift of taxes away from commercial and onto residential and that's a concern. It has to be better explained and the nuances of how it affects your tax bill and your, based on your assessment and the special levy has to be clarified for the public. So that's our challenge as a council. Let's, let's get that prepared and get it out to them. If we can, if we can do it in some way that we can put it out in advance of a public meeting by way of information or something, it would be good, but that may not be reasonable.
Yeah, so I would say that, I mean, there are two points to this. One is, one is about some leveling of the gap. You know, assessment has progressed so far away from zero that, that it has created this, you know, gap between highest and home and lowest and home assessment value that some people are paying, you know, far more for protective services and others are paying very little. And that applies to all taxation, whether it's just protective services or not. This is one opportunity to identify one, one clear cost that is applied universally to all properties in town and potentially flatten some of this massive curve that goes on. And that's a flaw in the assessment system. That's not a flaw in, that's not suggesting that people are taking advantage of something. It's just a flaw in the formula. That assessment system has been in place for, I don't know, how long in Canada and we are seeing, Canada is seeing special service levies being used to flatten that, to deal with that issue. And we're doing nothing the same. And I mean, I think if you drill it down in simple enough numbers and said, you know, what is an acceptable number period for people to be expected to pay no matter what if they own a single property in town? What does that threshold look like? Is it $75 a month? Is that acceptable as a minimum number? If we had, if somebody came up and said, what do you think the minimum number should be period for somebody to pay per month for having a house in town? Doesn't matter what the house looks like, it's a house, it's in town, it sees services. What should that be? And I mean, I think if people saw what those numbers look like, what the lowest per month charge is for a property in town against the highest per month charge is, that you would see that compared to numbers from 1970, 1980, when assessment was a really good system, that everybody would be like, wow, yeah. That increase in assessment doesn't necessarily reflect increase in earning power, for example, or reflect CPI index increases across 30 years. And that's what we're trying to do there. But in the larger picture, leveling that, leveling that incremental or that exponential increase, increase based on the assessment increase doesn't change the environment of the economy that we have in the town. I mean, we could change it to a flatline service levy across the board and everybody pays exactly the same in every property. Doesn't change the environment for growth. It doesn't really, it doesn't change the fact that no commercial companies are coming here to set up shop. No secondary manufacturing industries are looking at our area as somewhere to grow and increase facilities. At the end of the day, it is commercial industrial economy that drives the communities. It is not presence of people that facilitates economy in the community. And if all you have is people and you have no business economy, then you just get what we have right now, which is people working somewhere are getting money somehow and simply having to fork over more and more and more to the governing body that's trying to run the services. And so I look at this situation that we have with the special service levy and there's an opportunity here to impact the environment of that commercial and industrial taxation has in place. I mean, right now as it sits, the commercial industrial tax rates are not amenable to growth. No industry is going to look at what we have and come here and set up shops and say, hey, this is great, this is an awesome environment for growth. I'm not suggesting that the solution is to download or shift taxes from commercial to residential, but if something like identifying what we think is a reasonable minimum payment that people should be paying period for properties allows for some reduction in or the creation of an environment where business and commercial can grow, then that is a good move in the biggest picture in the longer term for our community. So I think it's important that we not lose sight of the longer term goal, which is, which is economic growth. And economic growth is driven by commercial and industrial businesses and they show up when you have an environment that allows for them to undertake business and profit. That's what it amounts to. And so that needs to be our long-term goal. If that starts to happen, then all of a sudden, seeing multiple residential housing units cropping up and new development and subdivisions cropping up is just going to happen because that's what happens in communities where commerce, where business and commerce happen. So definitely there's a need for some review of what's been proposed, making sure that it's tweaked to hit our targets, but let's make sure that we don't lose sight of what the long-term targets are.
If I may, just one quick question.
Sure.
Do you think that this sale of 31 lots and construction being brought in at 24 lots up to lockup stage, that, that's going to help attract the people that are the higher end jobs that they're looking for at CKPI or at the Northern Health Authority or, or other places around town that they're, because I'm told one of the issues is they just can't find a place to buy. So maybe they do find a place to buy now and maybe that does attract more people and then that, I think in the long run would make a more attractive community overall.
Yeah, no, I don't, I agree. I mean, any development is going to help. It's going to help our revenue side, but it's also likely to help any business or entity that's trying to recruit to our area. I think selling lots at $1,000 is a great move. I do wonder how much of that, or if any of that was driven by the proposed existence of special service levy that, that would see some flattening of taxes. When you're talking about sale in a subdivision that will be assessed at very high value there, lakefront lots, although they're unserviced and so, you know, there's some, some diminishment of that assessed value because of it. You know, it would be interesting to see whether or not we hear any voices from the people that purchased those lots, about whether or not their decision to purchase those lots wasn't based solely on the purchase price, but also based on the idea that we were looking at trying to flatten that curve of taxation. And so I guess my point is that, I mean, in the, in the largest term, I don't think that the sole element of creating new homes in new subdivisions will cause commercial and residential, or commercial and industrial growth. It won't. I mean, it will service a need that exists right now for those that are here, but it won't foster new growth. And that's what we need. We need, we need diversification, right? I mean, we know that. We've just been through this with CKP. And so, I mean, that's my, my point. I get your point and that need exists clearly for the, for the businesses that are here. And I think, you know, I think taxation has a lot to do with whether or not those homes go up. So I don't know if that's on the market or not, but that's my big deal. Anybody else?
I thought of this a lot and for me, a lot of it came down to, you know, when I was elected, I was elected by residents of the Town of the Pot. One of the big things that we heard about was residential taxes. For me, I think the special service levy would work if, a lot better if we took the commercial aspect rate out of it. I don't agree with shifting the burden onto the residential tax pay, which unfortunately is what this proposed levy would do. It's not intentional, but that's what it does and to me, that's not justifiable and it's not defensible. I agree that we need to grow our community, though we're not ready to grow our community and we need to do it slowly so that we don't get ourselves into a mess. We need to move in and we need to move down. So as much as we would love to have big industry... as we would love to have big industry, our infrastructure can't handle it. Like, we couldn't handle condos going up and apartment buildings going up right now because our infrastructure just can't handle it. So I just feel like, again, it would work a lot better if we took the commercial aspect out and maybe in five or 10 years from now, when, you know, we've broken ground on a dump and we've broken ground on a lagoon and we're really ready to grow our community, that we could go back and revisit the way the special service levies are laid out. But I just, I've talked to a lot of people. I've talked to business people as well. And even some of the business people have said that they don't agree with shifting the burden onto the residential taxpayers. So that's my, that's my take on it. I think that, again, yes, people should pay and they should pay equally, but I don't think it's fair that or equal that if we're doing it per parcel, then it should be, you know, if your business is on this many parcels, then that's how many, that's how many times you pay for the levy because that's how many parcels you're on. That's my opinion anyways.
So if I may then, you do agree though that we can probably keep more than two balls in the air at one time. Like, for example, in 2017, sadly, you know, the Town Center Hotel, the New Hawaiian, a couple of management housing units, 36 apartments over on Campbell, all those, none of, none of those toilets flushed. And so the capacity they had talked about there, there's some relief in there.
A little bit. But is that what we want to focus on? Do we want our community to only be able to grow because other things burn down or disappear? Like, it's, you know what? We could probably put a new building or something in now or, you know, one of those places could be replaced because we know the infrastructure is there. But again, that can only happen because we've lost housing that was directly needed in the first place.
Don't deny that. And also that, you know, CKPI is looking at finding some way that we can work harmoniously to remove as much sludge as possible out of the lagoon and they would drive, they'd use it for fuel. And the less sludge that's in our lagoon means higher capacity. So, you know, before we're ready to shut our lagoon down, let's keep an eye on all of the things that are keeping it open.
Sorry. And another thing that I want to say is that I think the proposed new levy would kill small business as well. Again, we need to grow our community small and slowly because we don't have the capacity to just grow it big right now. And again, like, yes, some of the, it might attract some big business, but what about all of our local small businesses who are owned and operated by local people who pay taxes and support all of the things in our community?
Good. Margaret?
I've made some points here. And the one that I did make on was the lagoon and dump. And then Crystal just pulled it right off my paper. No. We made a promise. Now, I kind of remember that we made a promise that before we do anything, our lagoon and our dump was going to be rectified. So to say, you know, well, we can do this or, you know, like, okay, the town center's not there and there's apartment block not there. But what if they want to turn around and say, well, this is my land. I had it before and I'm going to put it here. Are you going to say no now? Well, we gave your rights away. I think before we jump on the gun and say, you know, we got to have big business here and let's do this, this is what we have to do. We have to look after it. We have to get a new lagoon and the dump has to be in place. And I think maybe we should, if there's a resolution that needs to be done, maybe we need to do that because this is a priority. And it's been put on the back burner quite a few years. And this is what we have walked into. So I don't think it should, it should be on the front burner and in print on the front burner. So everybody knows what our priorities are. They sold the lots. So if you're working with the RHA or whatever, you know what? You've got a lot. You've got a contractor. There, you've got a house. There's quite a few houses in town for sale. I don't know how many, but I hear, you know, I know there's quite a few that are sitting there and they're not moving. So real estate isn't moving. And like for small businesses, I'm going to say like for myself, if you have a whole bunch of, like some more small businesses, you don't necessarily have to look for like what this one, like I know what you're talking about, the big huge business. But if you have more small businesses, that's going to be a bonus too. And we have to look at that. And we want to be fair. Like, I don't want somebody saying to me like, huh, you don't have to pay tax? Well, you know what happens when that comes? You're not going to pay your fair share? They don't walk through the front door. And that's as simple as that. So we, and that's, that's what happens. That's, that's the truth when you're sitting in this, but.
But again, big business will also attract small business.
No, they will too. But I just have to emphasize, we cannot forget the lagoon and the dump. That is our priority.
I think it's important to mention that when we did our strategic planning, the lagoon was on that list, the dump is on that list, economic growth was on that list. And so we have to learn how to do these. Can't just do one at a time or, boy, where are we in trouble? You know, so I just, I know, it's not, it's hard, hard, hard. Now.
Just to backpedal a bit, when this came out or when we carried the proposal to bring it forward a few weeks ago, I think we not jumped the gun, but what happens a lot when you work on a project for a long time, you get really close to it. So we worked on it. It was familiar with us. We may not have all agreed, but we spent a lot of time, a lot of money dealing with it. And then we did a really poor job of rolling it out. And we can't deny that fact, you know? In Flintland, they had a pamphlet at a dog and pony show and we didn't do any of that. And we're all guilty of that, myself included. And I think that's creating some of the issues we have. We have people angry, not because they may or may not like the idea. And granted, they're not all going to like the idea. But a lot of them just don't know. So they're scared and they're uninformed, right? And I know everyone's doing a good job to talk to them, but we didn't do a good job of rolling it out. So if we do anything for the 28th, we have to have our ducks in a row and clearly present what we're trying to do. And again, not everyone's going to agree, but they need to understand why we're doing it. So and as it sits now, we're sort of looking at three options. And sort of based on what I've heard here, one is to scrap it all together, which my personal feeling is that's a bad move. Go forward with what we've presented or alter it to some form and go forward, right? So whatever we choose, and again, I hope we're choosing to move forward in some capacity, but come the 28th, this is the 28th, right? That we've got nailed down what we're trying to present to them. Further to Andrew's comments about business and small business, if you look at the state of our downtown core and it's growing, Margaret's shop's great, there's a few coming up, but we're not a hub of small business. We're a hub of no business, right? So and taxes are, I believe, at the root of that. And you talk about houses being for sale. Well, that's true and that's one form of housing. But, you know, there's other industries that need other types of housing. They need condos. They need seniors housing. They need housing for students. So it's not all one, you know, there's not a one magic bullet. You need the full spectrum. And that's not what we're not seeing. And what's lost, I think, in a lot of this is that the majority of our housing stock is quite old. So your lake lots are a good point, right? This is going to be a great example. You bring on something new, it's going to be two to three times the assessed value. So you're going to pay two to three times the taxes. So it's not going to get built. So I don't know whether people are speculating or, but that's the reality, right? And, you know, there's no secret. We have apartments and you guys have seen the proposal. We've done for affordable housing. That's a $60,000 tax bill, right? So as I've said before, you might get affordable housing because you have a partner who's going to forgive their loan over a number of years, right? Which is the only way the numbers work. Because $60,000, any way you shrink it out is a lot of money, right? Like, that's a make or break on a deal. And so I think over time, if the demand continues, you'll start going, seeing apartments built in the RM, apartments built on OCN. So we have, we've just made our problem even worse because there's more draw on our services and we're not getting any tax dollars for it. So I get it's a hard pill to swallow. But I think part of the backlash we have is our own fault, right? Because we didn't do a good job of rolling it.
If I can just add one small thing to that, and I'm going to steal a line I believe that you used, is that when you sent a note to us after the sale of that, is that, you know, when you look back at financially, what had happened here 18 months ago, what could have happened here 18 months ago, and the resiliency of the people in this community to then go forward and by 31 lots, like I think that speaks volumes about who our friends and neighbors are. They want to see this community grow. It is by far a very difficult thing to do. And I could not agree more with you on it's rolling out. It's that information. We just put that out in the paper and didn't back it up with anything. And when people are scared, they head to a dark corner. And if they don't like the numbers, they'll make them up. And that's what's happened to a lot. And so we have an opportunity. I believe we have a good deal. I believe we have a deal that needs some tweaking here. That's all. And likely one of them is going to fall on your back, counsel, again, because, you know, some people are saying, well, why would I pay $900 when he has a building and has 36 suites in it and he pays $900? There's something wrong with that. So maybe there is something wrong with that. Maybe, maybe we'll find out how we can get that tweaked. But this really needs to go forward, people. This, we need to, this is our one cost that we have that we really have no control over and we all have absolute total full access to. Throw a little rock into 2019. I don't know why your two bags of garbage should cost more than theirs, but sometimes it does. And so we need to keep going forward. And so I'm asking, with the permission of council, that Graham roll up his sleeves and see what he can come up with that is an easier pill to swallow, knowing full well, we all have a pill to swallow. Some of them are smaller pills and some of them are larger. So if that's okay with council, I'd like to direct him to do that.
Is that okay with Graham?
Yeah, is that okay with Graham?
It puts him in a bad spot. We were just talking about getting the budget back on our.
I think with the approaching budget deadline, it's probably unreasonable to try and get into this year. Like, it's, you're running out of time. We've got to get a public hearing in for the budget. We've got to meet. We've got to finalize the budget numbers here. Okay?
So what if council also rolls up their sleeves and we have a meeting? We get more information. We have another meeting in between now and the public hearing and we get our ducks in a row so that when we get to the public hearing, they're already.
Because he's, we need the data, right?
Your funnel, your funnel point is meet. I have X amount of time to work on this, to work on the budget, to work on the audit and catch up. So got to decide where your priorities are, right?
Jennifer?
I will have to look, but your public hearing was for a specific bylaw. It's not for the concept of this. It is for a specific bylaw being the $900. If you deviate and change from that, you may have to start the whole public hearing process over. I have to verify that.
I understand that, yeah. And you do have to, because that's been floating around the back of my head at 3 o'clock most mornings. But as I, I'm sure I recall on occasion, we have done that where we have had first reading and passed it and then second reading has amended. And so.
This is different. This bylaw's different.
I just, I just, I don't, I'm not looking and I don't, I don't mean this to sound bad or nasty or anything. I'm not looking for reasons why we can't do it. I'm looking for reasons why we can do it. So.
Is there, so I mean, we would have the capacity, this bylaw has been, the hearing has been discussed, this bylaw that was presented. And so the hearing is about that bylaw. It's an opportunity for feedback to come. And then there are a second and third reading. The second and third reading provide opportunities for change to that bylaw, right?
No, you have, if you change that bylaw, you have to have another public hearing because it's a specific bylaw.
Oh, gotcha. This is the hearing on the bylaw regions, right?
And keep in mind further down the line, there's chances are that people will arrange to the government and there'll have to be a municipal hearing on it. Guaranteed.
Yeah. So if we're facing change, we're facing a second hearing.
And you're going to have to do first reading, then it's going to go to the province, or you can do your second and third.
That's presuming that you don't make any other changes that would cause another hearing to happen.
And just a reminder, it wasn't that many years ago too. I believe that the city of Flintland put off passing their budget almost the end of summer.
It is important.
It can be done. Something's going to give.
That's the words I'm looking for. It can be done.
So in your opinion, what can get?
Counsel decides is more important, I guess.
The longer they bounce that back, we should be a little.
But you're going to need your budget to go with that because that's going to affect the outcome of the debate.
So levy budget, is that realistic and everything else goes to the back burner?
Those are the two things that are, those are the ones that are in most conflict, right?
Yes, I know.
Maybe.
No, I say yes, maybe.
I don't mean to put you on the spot either.
No, I don't have a, but I'm putting you on the spot. Okay, so are we good then?
I'm just going to, I thought the last few years, we kind of went with the budget and we wanted it done by a certain time. And that was very important for us to get the budget done at a certain time. Now we're saying.
It is important.
It is important.
It is important.
No, I know it is important, but now you're just saying, well, can we do the levy before the budget?
It's probably a whole host of repercussions to stop sending your budget in on time, right?
Well, you ask for an extension. I think you absolutely need to.
Now, that may also affect any grant funding we apply for. If we don't have our budget in on time, we may lose consideration for other monies, right? Or other options. So again, I don't know.
I'm just saying, I'd rather, I just feel like, you know, is this being rushed a little bit? Do we need to have this done? You know, can it wait to 2019? I'd hate to get it rushed through and then.
I don't think we are rushing through. I mean, we've been working on this and talking for.
No, I'm working it, but there seems to be a deadline. There seems to be a deadline.
There is a difference between rushing and momentum. This has some momentum right now, I think. My sense is, is that if we back off on this, and I don't mean back off in a bad way. I mean, I'm talking about, we need to make changes and that's going to extend the deadline. That's going to, that's going to create some moving parts. The decision we have to make is whether or not this is important to us as a council. If we choose to undertake the budget and get the budget in, then that means we're choosing to not implement the special service levy for 2018. That doesn't prevent us from creating the special service levy for 2019. But it does put us in a position where it's already March. This term is in October, it's over in October. At some point, undoubtedly soon, because I've been through this once before, there will be a great desire to haltingly make decisions because you don't want to implement things that you feel like, you know, that a council coming in may want to weigh in on. And so my sense is, is if we choose to make the budget a priority exclusive of the special service levy and delay the special service levy for 2019, we won't get it done. Not because we don't think it's a good idea, not because we won't try. We just won't. It just won't happen. And it'll be partly because this guy is going to be real busy doing lots of stuff and we'll be just as indecisive as ever. And then we'll look up one day and it will be July and everybody's going to be like, hey, I don't want to, we shouldn't pass that because there's other people now that have been nominated that are platforming, that are campaigning, and they are doing their very best to undermine any work that you may look to do if they don't think that it's a popular decision. And elections have become popular. That's what they're based on. We saw this last year. That's how it goes. And so I can predict right now that if we choose not to do it for 2018, we might as well, I would suggest, even stop wasting our time and focus our efforts on something that can be achieved before the election in October because we won't get it done. I don't mean that in a negative way. That's human nature. It is what we want. That's my opinion anyway on how we will behave, not on purpose, for the next six months when we're eating up October if we choose not to do it. I think it's achievable. I think if we choose to make the special service levy a goal that we implement for 2018, then that means that everybody's got to shake off all of the other distractions and focus on the special service levy, focus on the budget, find the right answer and execute. And the rest of it, all of the other things that we had for the programs that were kind of goals and whatever, they fall to the wayside. And we allow our staff to be focused on it. We don't drag them off in different directions on special little projects because of this thing or that thing. And we focus and we do it. Otherwise, you know, I can see what our productivity is going to look like, both with big. My opinion, somewhat experience-based. So for me personally, I would like to focus on the special service levy. I think it's the right thing to do. I think we've had the time at the table to know that we can create a system that can work and that it is defendable and that we should be able to explain it. If we've been sitting here for three and a half years, we've been sitting here for three and a half years, if none of us can explain to somebody that comes to us with a concern, is this the right thing to do, how the mechanism is going to work and how it impacts the bottom line and how that, how that reaches us towards the larger, the larger term, longer term goals, then we didn't belong here in the first place. So I'm good to go with it. I don't have a problem. And I think if Graham and Randy and Jen know that we are focused, laser focused on.
and Jen know that we are focused, laser focused on getting the special service levy not pushed through, but done and done right with the momentum that's behind it right now, then I think it's achievable.
Good to hear.
That's what I was trying to say.
Brian?
I concur that we've got to go at it, we've got to do it, we've got a short window. I think the challenge for counselors is going to be their availability to come and have meetings, have discussions, and get it done, because if we just shuffle it off to our very worthy and hardworking staff, and they don't get some feedback as they're going along, they can work for a week or two and then find out from us, oh, well, no, that's not what we wanted.
Ready to focus in?
So you've got to, we've got to focus in, we've got to check in, or some way of getting the, as we're doing things, we're getting feedback to our staff, and then if we have a question, they need that early, not late.
Yeah. Margaret?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Alan, you're good?
No, I'm good with that, I just don't want to bump our gram.
Yeah, I would say stop wearing long sleeve shirts to our gram, you know, you've got to roll them up. Okay, so...
I'm just going to move in for a public hearing March 28, ask what we're presenting to the public, what's in that bylaw?
Can we get some feedback? I mean, so we've got, we've got information servicing, we're changing this, or this alternative, that alternative, can you confirm for us what, yeah, what the extent of change is allowable for the public hearing, can you do it before?
We'd probably only have to put it off for a week.
You need 30, if you change that bylaw, you need 30 days, I need 30 or 40 days' notice to send it up to the office.
So we can find out the threshold, kind of the extent of change that we can make without triggering a public hearing, if it's a very small threshold, then we're just going to cancel this one, reissue anyone by quickly making some decisions, or whatever it is we're going to do. Not rushing, just quickly making decisions that are good decisions based on, that are based on good thought and process. It's just that the process needs to happen more frequently than once every two weeks.
Any other comments on this?
I would also say that it's not Graham that has to roll up his sleeves.
No, I agree, I agree. All right, listen, that was, that was some great stuff, so thank you very much.
When are you guys wanting to meet again?
Soon.
Next council's march 28.
So how about a quick one, maybe?
Yeah, all right.
On the six?
Six is up. Okay, anything else? I'm going to host you moving camera, please, Deputy Mayor.
Be it resolved that we do now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of committee of the hall with Mayor Scott in the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.